Good evening. We will begin the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board meeting dated February 20th, 2023. It's about 6:40, 6:33 PM. This is Kathleen Willnauer, the Chair, and we will now call, uh, meeting to order with the roll call.
Carol Crisca is absent. Mark Crumbaker?
Here.
Michael Faux, he was on Zoom, but he is not there anymore. So we'll see if he comes back.
He dropped.
Kathleen Willnauer?
A present.
Jim Neese is absent. Melissa Morris?
Here.
Brian Lewenberg?
Here.
Well, so, okay, um, Mike Faux, we see you're on now. We're taking role. Can you acknowledge that you're here? Mike Faux?
We may not have a quorum. Is that possible, Chairman?
Well, with Mike on, we will. We'll have four.
If he comes on.
He is on. We're just trying to get him to unmute.
Oh, were we not unmuted?
Oh, Mike Faux is on.
Can you find it?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Mike Faux, we're taking role. So we're acknowledging you're here.
Okay.
Okay, so we have four members present. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Um, we will now read the zoning board hybrid statement. This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. Please note this meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble, please call 913-715-1700. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click Raise Hand in the Webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. Please do not utilize the raise hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a 10 seconds remaining warning sound. To board members and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking so that the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you. We will now move on to agenda items. Are there any additions, deletions, or revisions to the agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mark Crumbaker, I'll move. We accept the agenda.
And do I have a second?
Brian Lewenberg, second.
Thank you. It's been a motion that we approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, the agenda is approved. Are there any disclosures of conflicts of interest this evening? Is there, are there any disclosures of external contacts or discussions? Hearing none, we will move on to approval of the minutes dated December 19th, 2022.
Mr. Mark Crumbaker, I move we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
And do we have a second?
Brian Lewenberg, second.
Thank you. Uh, we will now vote for approval of the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, the minutes from December 19th of 2022 have been approved. Uh, we will now move to board reports, and I believe that Sean has those for us this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, remember Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. The, um, items I wanted to note for the Board of County Commissioners' actions, uh, on January 19th, 2023, the board approved the preliminary and final plat for McCalman Acres. This is the plat, if you recall, at our last zoning board meeting for this Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board. The subject property is located at 111th Street, east of County Line Road. That plat was approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, if you'd like, I can give an update on the Planning Commission actions. The last meeting for the Planning Commission was on January 24th. At that meeting, the Planning Commission considered the year, the 2022 year in review uh, for all the cases that were considered by the Planning Commission and by all of the zoning boards. In addition, the Planning Commission discussed the 2023 Strategic Action Plan. There was also a initial discussion for a draft amendments to the zoning regulations for accessory buildings. Now, if you recall, the Planning Commission's been working and the staff has been working with Planning Commission on amendments to the regulations to allow accessory buildings, uh, and a change to our regulations that would allow for larger buildings and also come up with a new process other than the conditional use permit. As you may recall, several applications had come before all those zoning boards for CUPs. That will be changed if adopted, if the, if the changes are adopted. It would be a new permit process for accessory buildings. So that had, they had an initial discussion of Planning Commission last month, and they plan to bring, uh, a plan will be for the March meeting, a public hearing with the Planning Commission for an amendment to those regulations. And finally, the Sunflower Area Plan update. There is a subcommittee working, um, on this, a subcommittee of the Planning Commission working on that 1998 plan for the Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant. There's a conceptual plan for future land use. As a result of the annexation by the City of De Soto for all of that property, that whole area plan needs to change. So the subcommittee's been working on that. We have, uh, had three, um, subcommittee meetings, uh, with that, uh, group, and we, uh, we have concluded that discussion with the subcommittee. We now have a public meeting that we're scheduling, uh, March 21st. It'll be open to the public to invite anyone for any comments on that update to the plan, to the rural comprehensive plan. And then we will come back before the Planning Commission for consideration of that update, and finally, B O C C approval after that. Uh, that concludes the staff updates. Uh, one other thing I wanted to note, uh, there was a mistake on our agenda. I forgot to note the Sunflower Quarry Inspection Memo. That was from the previous meeting last year. That update was, that should have been eliminated from this agenda, but I happen to answer any questions on the board reports.
Uh, this is Kathleen Willnauer. Are there any questions for Sean of the board members? Uh, hearing none, we will move on to the business before the board this evening. Uh, and Jay Leibsig, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, Jay Leibsig, the Planning Director. Uh, just wanted to note, give a quick introduction to Peg Trent, their Chief Legal Counsel with the county. We'll be making a presentation this evening on the, uh, proposed bylaws for the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board. Um, and we've talked about this, uh, at our previous meeting. We started this process last year with the Planning Commission, then went through the Southwest Zoning Board, uh, then the Southeast Zoning Board, now where we've had fun with the Northwest. So we're kind of making the rounds to all of the zoning boards. It's essentially the same document, uh, with a few changes in terms of the membership, but the, uh, but the, the core of that document remains the same. So it's kind of a template that we're following. And with that, I'll, I'll turn this over to Peg.
Thank you, Jay. Uh, Madam Chair, if I may proceed?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Um, so as Jay has indicated tonight, I want to briefly go through the proposed bylaws. And as Jay indicated, this is copying basically a template from the other, um, planning and zoning boards that have reviewed this prior to you. The only difference is, I wanted to bring to your attention is, um, some time ago, I think last year, um, Jay and staff had requested this board sign oaths of offices as well as acknowledgement of the Code of Ethics. The Code of Ethics at that time had been adopted back in 1988, and the Board of County Commissioners had created a subcommittee comprised of three of the county commissioners, uh, in 2021. And as a result of their efforts, that was brought forward through, uh, Committee of Whole Meetings of the Plan, of the Board of County Commissioners. And on February 16th, last week, Thursday, the board adopted a revised version of the Code of Ethics. So, um, Jay has provided to those who are at the dais. I think we have a copy we can disseminate to you. Um, we're also going to provide you an acknowledgement. I'm not asking you to sign it tonight, but just so you review those, we'll also email those out to those who are in our listening off, uh, audience too of members so that they can review it. But just a broad overview, you'll notice that, um, the comparison with the 1988 version versus this, the font, the formatting looks a little bit updated since then. But, um, substantively, the changes, if you hit from, I think, page three on, um, and there's only seven pages, I believe now. There were 11 pages. It basically is the same up to that point, just cleaning up grammar and making sure it's more concise. Um, and that's outlining what the standard ethic, uh, standards are for the county. These, uh, Code of Ethics now only apply to the Board of County Commission and members of boards and commission, and no longer applies to elected officials like the sheriff and the DA, which they couldn't have enforced anyway, and employees. Employees go through their own employee handbook and through their hotline and policy. And essentially, it was an antiquated or awkward process. There wasn't really a process of how to report a complaint on a board member or county commissioner member. Now, there will be a complaint form on, um, the count, on my website, on the Chief Counsel's and Director of Legal Department's website for the county, um, whereby an individual can put a complaint forward concerning any actions of a board or the county commissioners. My office, um, and myself will review those complaints and render a decision in advance. Just like before, we can provide, um, advisory opinions to the board in advance of their meetings, um, in order to give that guidance. Um, if there is an ethical complaint, what will happen now? Those are all confidential still, but we will review those with, um, the parties to make sure that, you know, we have a written opinion of what our findings are and then see if we can reach compliance with the issue. If we cannot, then it goes to the Board of County Commissioners where they then will review, make a decision of what sanctions. The sanctions are the same. That could happen. Nothing's changed on that. We just streamlined the process. If the complaint is concerning something that I have a conflict on, or I don't feel comfortable rendering that and want it to be outsourced, I can go to outside counsel, which I've been doing now anyway in certain cases, and/or the commission can request a second opinion. If I render an opinion, they can get a second opinion. So there's a process that we're trying to put in that streamline. Um, the one, two items that is changed is conflict of interest and ex parte communications. You've already been discussing ex parte communications, so we've already covered that one. We just are, um, clarifying that in the policy. But the change is conflict of interest. Before, the standard was very broad. It was, um, subjective, appearance of impropriety. Well, anything could be an appearance of impropriety. It's subjective. So what we wanted to do is to put something that's more measurable for volunteers, and that would be, and for the board, is, um, financial. That's what we're really looking at. Your pecuniary, pecuniary interests or financial interest, whether direct or indirect, in a matter that's before you, that you're considering. And we're also now applying the local conflict statute, which really outlines what is a substantial interest conflict. So essentially, we're just following state law, and we've added another layer of financial interest that would cause you to recuse yourself. Um, we are asking you to fill out your application that you, the board determined. For the Board of County Commission, they are filling out a substantial interest form that is required by the state of Kansas. Um, they will continue to do that and update it with me and keep that current. What we're asking with this board and board members is you can, every year, complete your application again. And what you're trying to do is if there's been a change of information, such as your employment or any other item in the organization that you belong to that may create a conflict. I am also, and my staff are looking at boards for conflicts now. We're trying to be a little proactive. We don't want a situation like we had with the Planning Commission where they're halfway into considering an item and then we're learning of conflicts. We want to make sure we're identifying and helping you prior to consideration of items. So essentially, that's the overview, high-level version of the Code of Ethics. If you could read over those. If you have any questions, you can reach out to me or to Jay or Sean, and they'll make sure they get those questions, uh, answered or responded. And then sign and execute that receipt of the, um, the new one. And then we'll make sure that that's filed away and get you new applications filled out for all of you to make sure we're, we're keeping current information in my office on you. And so I'll stop right there. Are there any questions at this point on that item?
These are fundamentally not great changes from where we were before, right?
Correct.
Pretty much the same thing.
Correct.
Okay, that's, I want to make sure there wasn't something I had to have you explain.
No, they're pretty streamlined now, um, and I think you'll find it easier to understand. Um, but that appearance of impropriety, you can always recuse yourself if you feel there's an appearance. No one's precluding you, but we're saying at the minimum now, you know, if there's a financial interest, that's the measurable way.
I would add define that. No. Like what my conflict is. I waved at the neighbor or something. That wouldn't count.
Exactly. So the reason I wanted to start off with that item is because as we go through the bylaws, you're going to see some of that carried over now into the bylaws. So the template that was utilized by the Planning Commission when they first started, that's changed since what the board has adopted. So with that, I was going to now proceed with the bylaws themselves. And I think we have a copy up here on the screen, and I don't know if we can share this with Zoom. Is it, can they see this? Okay. So it basically, what it's doing in the bylaws, and I'm going to give you a quick, uh, high-level overview of this as well to walk you through. And what I would hope is that you can stop me along the way. I'll stop and pause for any questions. Um, and then what I would hope is you can read them. Take an opportunity by your next meeting. If you have any questions, again, you can reach out to myself or Jay or Sean. We'll make any corrections or typos that we find, and then we'll have another draft of those after tonight. Um, if I redline some, that'll make sure that that gets back to you for your next meeting, for your review, and hopefully your approval. So, starting out with the first paragraph, this is the establishment of the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board. And as you know, it was, um, reconfigured, if you will, or reestablished. Um, it was originally in 1998, but after, uh, various, uh, amendments in 2000, it resulted in a consolidation of a few of the, um, townships and everyone into one board, one zoning board. At that time, your jurisdiction is outlined, outlined in this paragraph. It indicates that you serve as an advisory in the unincorporated and non-city regulated areas of Johnson County for the townships of Lexington, um, that part of Olathe Township lying north of 143rd Street, and that you're subject to this jurisdiction, and these are the items that are coming before you. So I'm going to pause there because we did have an issue with another board with the jurisdiction somehow, um, and what that entailed. But I just want to pause there. Is there any questions as to that?
That's no change.
No change.
Didn't think so.
Okay. So moving on to purpose and mission, this just, uh, codifies what you already know what you've been doing because you've been doing it for quite a while. So this is just putting it in writing so that you know that your role is to, um, review and submit recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners as to whether there's the approval or disapproval of subdivision plats, development plans, rezoning requests, conditional use permits, special permits, accessory dwelling, um, concerning any, uh, item that's within your jurisdiction that we previously outlined. And in your role, you're also looking at, um, the comprehensive plan you're providing and subdivision regulations to promote, you know, the guidance of what you're doing in your review. And then any other duties that the Board of County Commissioner may delegate to your zoning board to handle. Again, I'll pause. Is there, are there any questions? Just briefly, I'm going fast, just high overview for you. Okay. Moving on, this is the bylaws, and this is the meet where we're saying these bylaws are kind of the transaction of how you are to conduct yourself as a zoning board and doing the business of this zoning board. Um, that is mandated by state statute that we have these bylaws and regulations. And yes, you have not been in compliance with state statute. This is getting you into compliance with state statute. In our subdivision regulations, it also outlines copying from state statute. You're to have bylaws for operation. Um, some time ago, it was discovered when we had the solar regs going through that there was no oaths, no signing of acknowledgement of the ethics, and now hence the bylaws. So we're trying to get you in compliance. What you also know now is you have attorneys that are assigned to each of you. So we have two attorneys assigned right now. It's Bob Ford, Robert Ford, as well as Ryan Haga. So you'll see him pop on. I don't know if they're on tonight, but they're being, there is one of them on, I think.
Ryan is on.
Ryan Haga's on. So they'll be, um, the ones that you'll be working through that's assigned now to your board to make sure we're in compliance and addressing any issues that come forward. These bylaws also, uh, give a understanding that Robert's Rules Apply of Order. I think that when you went through the training in October, I sent you out the cheat sheet. I know people don't like to see a cheat sheet, but it's a cheat sheet of Robert's old, downloaded it from the, um, from the website, and just gives you an overview of parliamentary procedure. You are not applying the commission's rules of order. The commissioners do deviate from Robert's Rules of Order in certain areas. They have their own separate rules that they just revised on February 2nd. Um, those were previously revised in 2007. But you are fully following Robert's Rules of Order, and so you have little cheat sheets I passed out in October that give you a big overview so that you would know. And also now, Jay and Sean are just experts in this area as well. Um, so they enjoy my humor. Um, all members have the right to, uh, inquire. Even the, um, chair gets an opportunity to vote. Some, some boards don't have that, but in this board, we do have that. So I'm going to pause for a minute. Are there any questions, especially if whether Jay knows these rules? He does. We also have a limitation of five minutes to speak on a requested item. The reason that's put on there is sometimes we get individuals that may, um, consume a conversation. We want to make sure that all board members feel valued, and your opinion matters, so everybody has an opportunity. I know I sat in on a meeting today. I didn't say, strangely enough, a single thing because everybody was saying what I was thinking, so I didn't have to speak for an hour. So that does happen, very rarely for me. But at this point, um, that's why we have that limitation, but that's at the direction of the chair. If you feel the conversation, by all means, you won't inhibit. We're just trying to put some limits to get items if you have to, uh, the business moving along. Members, the composition is seven. Um, just so you know, your resolution indicates five to seven. They have to declare a number, so you've declared seven, and it should have been declared in your resolution, but we'll correct that later. We're finding mistakes as we're going through these processes, so we probably will be bringing that back at some time to clear that up from the legal standpoint with the board. But right now, um, it's seven members. As you know, tonight, four is a majority. That's what we're looking for. So let's say we have a conflict of interest. One has to abstain, and you have four in the room right now. Even though one's abstained, you have a quorum to still proceed to get your business done. That one person would just abstain from voting. So that's how the majority works. Um, the term of office is three years. You fill, um, vacancies shall be filled by appointment of the Board of County Commissioners for your unexpired. There's no pay for this. You do this volunteer work. Um, and we, uh, expect that you'll conduct yourselves in good business manner. And never has there been any issue with that, that I'm aware of, with boards. Um, moving with Code of Ethics, we just went over there. Here's the double typo. We'll make sure we get that out. Um, let's see here. Uh, that's why I'm here. I'm just going to clean it up. And then the conflict of interest. This is what I described earlier from our Code of Ethics. This is just repeating it over to your bylaws so that you know we're looking at pecuniary interests. As a matter of fact, it mirrors what's over in your Code of Ethics, so we're just copying it over. Um, the only thing that was different, I think, from previous drafts, not for you, but for the Planning Commission, is there was a rule that you had to step outside if you had a conflict. Robert's Rules of Order allows for both, so you can stay in the room to be counted in the quorum just so they can get the business done or step out. That's the main difference there. Resignation, if you resign, we don't want you to, but if you do, you have to, uh, put in a letter. If not, we'll reduce it into writing, so it needs to be in writing. Also, this bylaws goes into vacancies. Um, so some of you may have known, you'll have a vacancy sometimes, and it shall be appointed within 60 days of a notification. That is, um, there have been policies within the Board of County Commissioners and their Code of, um, the Rules of Order, that there's 60 days to appoint where the chair will appoint. Well, the chair, previously Chair Eiler, did not enforce that. He just allowed that more time for that commissioner. Um, at this point, I'm not sure if that's still in the rules. Uh, I should know that, but at this point, it's 60 days in order for that to occur. If you no longer, these now, we articulate the reasons of a vacancy being declared in which then, you know, it's basically not a removal, but understanding that the, uh, position, um, is declared vacant is if you no longer meet the qualifications. And as you know, some of the qualifications to be on your board, some of you as a trustee and/or living in that unincorporated area of your jurisdiction. So if you fail to attend three or more consecutive meetings, and that's only if you don't have cause. You just decide I'm not showing up. And with this hybrid method, I think this has created an opportunity that we can get more attendance and people participating. Um, if you violate a policy established by the Board of County Commissioner regarding conflicts of interest with the Code of Ethics, keep in mind, um, that is cause for your removal, as you know, from the, um, from the, uh, ethic policy that I went over, the sanctions, those haven't changed. That's still the same. Um, if a member completes guilty to a crime that is a felony or a member is convicted, we have had individuals that have been charged but not convicted. Um, still, it just depends on the situation, but, uh, keep in mind, if you're convicted, um, that is a vacancy, so warranting removal. Um, I'll pause right there. Any questions at this point? Okay, hearing none. Moving forward, this is also, um, the bylaws are outlining what you already do. And tonight, I understand after we're finished, concluded, that you'll be, uh, appointing officers for this upcoming year. Um, this is not adopted this year. We're just going to follow what you've always done in process, but this will be moving forward after today, um, that you will have an officer will serve one-year term. Um, and that in the June of every year, you'll elect from its members the chair and vice chair by majority of vote. And I think, uh, the chair has a great process tonight in order to do that, and so, um, you'll go through that. But basically, um, you'll go through, uh, if we cannot get someone or the vice chair, chair's not available, then we have the longest-serving member who is present to act as the chair. Um, and we've unfortunately had to utilize that when conflicts occur, and we've had a lot of people that have conflicted off, and so that's why we've had to utilize. So those who are sitting in that chair for the longest serving, thinking that you're off the hook, you're not. You could come, find yourself in that role. Any officer of the board may be removed by a motion, so if your fellow, uh, board members feel that you're not cutting it, they can make a motion in order to have you review, removed from that chair or vice chair, uh, position. The only time I've really seen that is when we're getting ready to remove that person from a board for any of those other vacancy acts. Then they will do that. Also, if there's a vacancy for the unexpired term, then you can elect among yourselves mid-year to fill that position. Any questions at that point? I went really quickly. Okay, so then you have your chair doing your chair duties, as you well know, your vice chair, your secretary. And your secretary is the director of the Johnson County, so that's Jay's role, um, to serve this, uh, your board and his sta, designating staff to serve in a secretarial role, which is Megan, and helping out. So it's kind of there. Everybody's working together as a team to get the information and duties that you need. Um, the staff will be provided by the Planning Department, and you may employ with contract, and that's usually the Planning Department when they do, uh, retain someone outside. They would be the one who would be securing that individual. Meetings are held on the fourth Wednesday of every month at 6:30 PM here in the administrative building, and that allows us to have the Zoom of capabilities and everything that you're seeing tonight, recordings and staff and everyone available. Recordings and staff and everyone available.
This is, this is changing it from Mondays.
Uh, this is Sean Penn and planning staff. I'm sorry, uh, Peg, we, this is one of those typos. This is this board meets on the third Monday of the month. And so this is another update. That's a good catch.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we'll also catch the quorum too in the, uh, section down below. That'll be four members instead of five. Yeah.
Special meetings can be called. This all should be done. The clause meeting schedule may be adjusted to consisting of holiday calendar. So I need to add, do we need to add this for the holiday calendar? We could add something to the effect. I think this was a note to me that you want to add something on that. And I agree, we could add that. So we'll add something about that so that you have that. So it's always this date unless we have something of a holiday schedule that would deviate. Again, parliamentary authority is under the newly revised. The commissioners had been working under the 10th edition and now we're on the 12th. We want to make sure that we're always using the current edition. I think the current edition started addressing the hybrid meetings that we're seeing tonight and all the video conferencing that's going on. That's changed dramatically from the 10th, 10th version. So you always will be in the revised version. We have copies of that available. We would have to order additional for everyone, but it's online. And basically that's kind of what I've been using is the online, although I do have a copy. Um, in a, in an absence of a rule or established practice, the chair can declare the proper procedure. And let's say we have a procedure by Roberts rules. You can always suspend that by a majority vote in order to do what you want to do of your business. Open meetings, again, all of these are open meetings. We have a typo over here of the band playing on of the Northwest zoning board. But you have open meetings, all of them, you know, that anyone could come in and listen. We always need to have someone here in person and the opportunity for the public to, uh, attend and noticed. Quorum is, uh, four members. Because as we discussed, you are seven member board. So four is your quorum.
Yeah, just a quick point. I think that band is just be space and.
I think you're right.
Instead of getting rid of the and.
Oh, thank you for catching that. Thank you.
Excuse me, Peg. I just wanted to note for the record that board member Jim Neese is now on, on Zoom.
Okay, fabulous. Hi, Jim. Okay. So agendas, um, agendas will be transmitted. I think this is your standard right now, five days prior to the scheduled meeting date. I think you're getting that now. I'm not sure, but this is the standard that we will be using. And that's days, not business days. So that's five days, which includes the weekend. So just so you know, it shall be made. Meeting matters which are not listed on the agenda may be added at the beginning of the meeting. Again, ex parte communications, their communications to influence a board member off the record and out of the presence of parties. Members should disclose the planning staff or during a meeting of nature of an ex parte communication. And where this is really important is when you're considering a zoning petition and what you see with the boarding, uh, zoning application, sorry. When you are, um, and then, and you'll see this with the Board of County Commissioners. If they're discussed and you are deciding something that's quasi judicial, it's kind of judicial and that, and it's going up to the board. All you need to do is just to say, hey, I went out to where this location is disclosed that you went out there. Just somehow work it into your conversation. If you talk to different people about this, hey, I talked to various land surrounding landowners just so that everybody has the same information you have. A lot of what I've heard in the past in these board zoning boards is you've picked up on setbacks and different things that maybe others may not have known by being out there. And so the other board members would, would benefit from knowing that as well. And they're making their decisions. And if it's incorrect, then staff could also correct that as to why, you know, so that we're all on the same page, deciding the same information. Emails that you receive or anything you receive along that line. All we're asking on generality is you just say, hey, I've been receiving correspondence on this or emails. We're not asking you to give full disclosures. We're just trying to make sure everybody's on the same board, uh, page when you're making a decision. The order of the business, and I think we've talked about this in the trainings back in October as well. Order of business, this is, um, something that you've been doing, which is great, the disclosure of conflict of interest. You do not have a lengthy agenda usually. Usually you'll have just a few items. So it's easy to do it at the beginning of the meeting. But some, um, boards like the airport commission, they wait till they get to that item. And then are there any conflicts? But this is a friendly reminder even to the chair that it's coming, that I may have a conflict. So you know, to write it down that that person's going to have a conflict. The roll call, obviously we establish it. And here's something new, I guess I didn't know, and this is up to you, whether you want is public comment at the beginning of the meeting. You know, at this point with the commissioners have been doing that. So that's why I've kept that continuity of a public comment. But you want public comments on the applications that are coming before you, not just in generality. But I could come in and say, hey, I don't like the way everybody's been handling accessory buildings and I want you to do them this way. And I think it's too small in our regs and we need to expand it, you know? And so you're hearing that, but you're not the board that does legislation. It's the planning commission. So we may, you know, you don't have to have that public comment, but it's good to know what others are thinking so that Jay then could take that back to others in legislation to take care of. But we don't want people just speaking at the beginning of a meeting when we know the agenda item's coming up. So that's, uh, up to you if you want it. Additions and deletions, you're doing that already. All of this you're already doing. We're just codifying this of old business, new business. And I'll pause right there.
Just a quick question. Did the public comment portion of the other zoning board, uh, for example, Southeast, did they remove that?
There, I don't know. I was kind of confused.
I thought they did.
I thought they did, and you can remove it. Planning commission is the only one probably I would not. But zoning, I see the value of removing it. So I'll go ahead and remove it if it's okay with everybody. Cause they'll, they'll comment on your applications. Thank you.
Yes, Kathleen Willnauer. We do have the zoning board public hearing procedures. And we do state in there when the public comment section is coming up for that particular application. I would suppose if someone came in and approached Sean or one of the other planning members at the beginning of the meeting and said, I have a comment, but it doesn't have anything to do with the application and I want it to be public, then we could fit it in at that point if we needed to. That hasn't been a concern of ours, I don't think yet.
Okay. All right. So for now we'll take it out. And if you do, you know, you have that leeway as the chair to have that ability. So public hearings, this is just codifying what you're doing already, your procedure for public hearings. And this is where, um, a person can come in to comment on anything of a public hearing. So they have that in presentations if necessary in public. There's nothing different than what you're already doing. The next is your minutes. Your minutes are, um, you have verbatim minutes here. So that's pretty nice to have as a record when it goes up to the board so that the board knows what your discussions were. And that was very valuable on some of your applications you've considered. And they do read all of that, just so you are aware, the Board of County Commissioners. So just be aware that they are aware of that. So, um, that is, uh, unique that you have verbatim. So I think it's great. The next is public comments participation. We will clarify this because we're not going to have it at the beginning of the meeting, but this is just public comments in general, the way people should be heard, spoken to and conduct. But we'll go through this and I'm going to highlight this, Megan and Sean and everybody that we need to go through and get rid of where they're commenting at the beginning of the meeting, but more limited. We want to make sure that when public comes in, they identify themselves, who they are. We also changed this with the, um, Board of County Commissioners. They now come in and say their name and, um, we don't ask for their address anymore. As you can imagine, that can be pretty as a public person telling my address, but that where I'm from, what city and state is what is interesting to you. And we could do county. Some of them are outside the county, but most are from Johnson County. So we don't go into any of that now. So I would recommend you mirror that language. The chair should have, have the opportunity to declare the time allotted. You know, Board of County Commissioners, um, do two minutes, but you can do more. It's up to you. We leave that open to your discretion as the chair and board. Usually no person other than the applicant or proponent of the agenda will be permitted to address more than twice. We limit them as once, but I've been in these board meetings where you have allowed the applicant to come back multiple times and others to come up and people with comments, neighbors who have questions, they want to get them answered. So that's up to you. But I, um, down here, we want to make sure that people refrain from obscene, profane, slanderous, insulting or threatening remarks. They want all comments directed through the front, no political campaigning, no commercial advertisements. As you will see, this was a major item that was revised by the code of, uh, the rules of order for the county commissioners. Because, um, you have first amendment rights and we don't want to violate that. And there was some restrictions in the rules previously from 2007 that were no longer applicable. So these are the updated rules, but I want to make sure we go through and review this to take out, addressing matters not listed on the public agenda so that that's not occurring. We're keeping you to the agenda. Recessed meetings. If there is a disturbance, I don't anticipate one, or there's some disruption here, then you can recess, come back later, but you can't move it around to avoid the public. But you, or, uh, an applicant that's upset, this is basically the process of how you do that. Voting members, you're all voting members, um, each of the, it's seven members. I think this is a duplicate from above. No, no, it is not. So we have just an error here and I apologize. Some of these were cleaned, carried over and I appreciate Sean and everyone, what they do to try to help me out because, um, I was busy and so they were just trying to keep us on task so we could get this to you tonight. So it's seven members. Each of the seven members, you each have a vote. Um, and it's the majority which we previously discussed, which is four members. You have an ability, um, when you have a financial interest, a personal financial interest, you're disqualified, so you have to abstain. Um, and as we discussed earlier, previously, um, you can, um, still be considered the quorum, but you're not in the vote. Another item that we've added new here is telecommunication voting. And what we're trying to do is that you can attend via video conference or anything else. We just request that you're present during the discussion of the entire item. Because if you aren't present, you aren't hearing or have the opportunity to hear everything that's being said. So you can't just come in and vote without hearing that debate on that item and what's discussed. And you can vote by telephone or video conference. No proxy voting, you know, your spouse stepping in and voting for you while you're away. You've got to, uh, make sure that you're, um, actually there to hear it. So no stepaways to the refrigerator. Requests, um, public records, keep in mind, everything we do is open record, public meeting. So anything we have is subject to public record. This can be amended. So once we do this, this will become with your attorney. I know Ryan's on the line right now. We will try to come out every time there's a new board seated in order to, uh, update, go through, are there any amendments? I recommend every year, every two years to go look at your bylaws to see if there's anything changing. And it, once you adopt these, these go to the Board of County Commission for their approval. So we will make sure of that. And that is the high level review. And I did it in very short time period to get through it all. So I'll stop at that point. Are there any questions? You'll have an opportunity to review further and then report back any comments. We'll make those changes and then I'll be back at your next meeting in order to just go through it one more time to see if there's any questions and then adoption of them. And then those will go to the board, um, for their review. And they will ask me as well if there was any issues. Oh, it's automatic. Okay. I'm just nervous. I get nervous not saving a document. So that's why I, and it's automatic. Any questions?
Hey, this is Sean Penn and planning staff. I do have a question that I don't know if we discussed this with any of the other zoning boards. And you may have mentioned this at the end, I didn't catch it. What is the process for officially adopting these? Does the Board of County Commissioners have to adopt this? And does the zoning board make a record before it goes?
Yes. Good question. Thank you, Sean. Chair, what will happen is these will come on for your next board meeting for a vote of whether to adopt these, um, bylaws as written or any revisions we make on that date, subject to those revisions. So if we make some revisions now, you'll have that red line version. So you'll see, you know, because I know staff will proofread this and we're going to make some revisions. And then let's say we're in the meeting next month and you want to make some additional. We'll make those revisions on the spot and make it subject to any revisions we make. That revised document with the revisions will then go to the Board of County Commissioner at their next regular agenda or as soon as thereafter in order for them to review and to adopt.
Peg, this is Kathleen Willnauer. I have a question for you back to, uh, the public that now are asked to, to state their name and address when they come to the podium. And you're asking that they not list their address when they come to the podium. It's helpful for me to know when we're reviewing an application that a person is two or three streets down or two or three houses down from the application as opposed to maybe someone that lives in the county, but across town. With the, the public not giving their address, we aren't going to know whether they're going to be, more specifically impacted by our decision. I think we might weigh the public opinions of people that are very close by more than we would someone that lived 10 miles away, for instance, or 20 miles away. It's not been an issue for us. I don't know that we've had anyone come speak publicly about an item that didn't live close by, uh, recently. And I know that the, uh, the announcements go out within, I think a thousand feet in writing. So most people that do come and give public comments aren't neighbors that live close by. But I'm wondering, is there a way, there really isn't going to be a way for us to know then whether these people are close by. If we just ask for their name and the city that they live in, a lot of them live in the unincorporated area. So.
No, that's an excellent point. And I think, um, I would leave the address in. Okay. And then, um, because you can deviate. And when this goes up, if you, and when you approve this and this goes to the Board of County Commissioners, I will bring that to their attention of why you deviated. There is practical reasons of why you're doing it. The only reason they were doing it, um, up at the board meeting is they were worried that people felt safe in order in front of a larger crowd divulging their address. That was the only reason.
And I certainly understand that. And now that things are recorded more, it's easier to find the information. You can see what the people look like now because they are being recorded. When before, maybe you would just go online and read through the, uh, the meeting to find out what people said. I, I think that it's a valid point in trying to protect people's safety.
Yes.
I just add that there have been times when we, uh, are looking at something like someone's building or something or putting up something large on their property, that there's an aerial view. And you say, I live right here and I can see it right here. So it's very valuable to know that. So yes, not only, not only am I close, but look on this map. This is where I am and I can look right over here and see this. That's why my opinion matters. It's kind of restating what she said, but sometimes it's very obvious.
As you go and review these again, if you see some other things that you feel of a value or are not going to work for you, just let us know. We'll discuss that at the meeting or let Sean and Jay know. All right? Cause if you think of something after this meeting.
Mark Crumbaker, we have particular interest in who they are, who they're talking to us. If it's somebody from the other side of the county, that's a lot different than the neighbor that lives, you know, a half mile down the road, a quarter mile.
Right.
Those are crucial to us. That's, we, we give them a lot more, um, more weight to what they have to say than if it's somebody who really doesn't even own property in the area that wants to just come speak, speak to an issue. That's important to us.
Yeah, agreed.
Hearing what they say, where they're at, what their concerns are very, you know, important to us.
Okay. No, agreed. I see your point.
Let's get everybody here.
Okay, that's all I have tonight, Jay or Sean. Is there anything else you can think of I've overlooked or?
No, thank you, Peg. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Always good to see you guys. Take care.
That was good stuff.
You too.
Worthwhile. Feel comfortable with what you. I mean.
We will now move on to election of officers this evening, which might be difficult since there are three of us here and two not, and two on Zoom. And Jay, would, would you like to add something, or Sean?
Just the, if, if you all wish to wait on this item, we could table it until our next meeting. If, if you're comfortable doing that, that might make some sense as well if we. But it's now, it's really up to the Board if, but that's what I would suggest.
It, it would be nice to have all the Board members present, either on Zoom or here. We can't nominate someone that isn't present. And so it's going to be more difficult, I think, for us to do our job properly until we have all seven members present.
Right, I'm Chair, this is Sean Penley, planning staff. I was going to mention the same thing. I think obviously a full membership of the Board would be very helpful for our election. And I noticed that Mr. Neese has his, has a question or comment.
I know, Jim here, Jim Neese, I just suggested we wait till, no big hurry. A lot of times we've gone six months and haven't liked anybody, so wait till the next meeting. I do, I, I had my hand up, and I didn't get to say one thing, just to be thinking about when we look over these regulations. We do have lots of people that come before us that own property that's affected by a decision that we mayor, that we may make. But they do not live, you know, they do not live on that property, so just keep that in mind. You know, that's, that's really all I've got to say about that, except it's, it's real common for somebody to to have a vested interest in something that we're doing, and they're not living on the property. And I certainly don't hold anything against it because they don't live around the corner, you know, Snuff said.
Enough said.
Kathleen, Mike, folks?
Yes, Mike?
I, my comment about the, the name and address is that, you know, these days, if, as far as safety goes, someone giving their address is somewhat inconsequential, because if you look at anybody's name and put down that they live in Johnson County, Kansas, their address is going to come up seventeen times on one page. Now, I know mine does, so I, I really don't think it's a, I, I don't think that as far as safety goes, it's going to make a lot of difference if someone's that determined to find out where someone else lives. And I, I agree with Jim and, and the other comments that it's kind of nice to know where someone, you know, what exact area they're coming from when they state their opinion.
Mike, it's Kathleen. Thank you for that comment. Peg made it sound like we could continue to ask for name and address for, from folks that are giving a public comment. So it sounds like we're in agreement to leave that in.
That's great.
Are there any other comments or any other business this evening? We are going to put off the election of officers until our next meeting.
This is Sean Penley, planning staff. I was just going to suggest one other comment here, the only other item. The next meeting, the next regularly scheduled meeting for the Northwest Underboard meeting is March 20th. I thought we can, we'll send out an update to all of the Board members asking about availability for that meeting day. So we'll try to get a initial response, but I guess be thinking about that if there's any question. At this time, I don't believe we have any other applications scheduled for that meeting. So the only item would be to consider the election of officers and, I guess, the revisions to the bylaws.
Okay. Are there any other comments for this evening? Then I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mark Crumbaker, I make a motion, we adjourn.
And is there a second?
Brian Ludenberg, second.
Thank you, Brian. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. We are adjourned.